Want to call this meeting to order? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll please?
Yes ma'am. Dr. Chase.
Here.
Ms. Decatur.
Here.
Ms. Egan. Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. McCosker.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Presente.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Is there a guys coming in?
No.
Not tonight?
Turn around.
Alright. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Well, Ms. Decatur has a...
I make motion to amend the agenda. I'd like to add, what's it called?
Board member comments.
Board member comments.
...this evening as it's our last, our last meeting prior to the approval of the Board of Supervisors' budgets.
Ms. Hazard, would you like to second that motion?
I would, I will second that.
You better.
Alright, all in favor of the motion to approve the amended agenda with the addition of Board Member Comments, which would be item 6.01? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Brings us to awards. I'd like to invite Colonel Mark Strom, U.S. Army retired, the Senior Army Instructor for the JROTC Program at Colonial Forge High School, to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Benson. For the first time in our program's history, the Colonial Forge High School Junior ROTC Academic Bowl Team has advanced to the Nationals competition to be held in Washington DC, June 22nd through 26th. The Eagle Battalion Team competed in two rounds of competition against 1,388 other teams worldwide to be one of the top 32 teams headed to Nationals. Congratulations to the entire Eagle Battalion J-Lab Team for their awesome knowledge, skills, teamwork, and competitive spirit. They bring great credit to Colonial Forge High School and all Stafford County Schools. On behalf of Sergeant Major Lee Werthen and Chief Warrant 3 Robert Dorr, we ask that the following team members come forward to receive their certificates. Joseph C. Ramos.
If we could hold the applause until we're all done, we'd think that would be good. Thank you.
Christian A. Palmer. Andrew G. Colongian. Mustafa Khan. Remy J. Roberts. Victoria Drummond. David M. Sousa. And unable to be with us tonight is Garrett J. Hyder.
Thank you Colonel Strom, and congratulations ladies and gentlemen. What an achievement. We next like to invite Mrs. Robin Lloyd, the Principal of T. Benton Gale Middle School.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, School Board Members, and Dr. Benson. A little change real quick. Would Noor Zakira, Brian Fines, Olivia Smith, and Mahati Badula please come down? Math Counts is a national math enrichment coaching and competition program that promotes middle school mathematics achievement through grassroots involvement in every U.S. territory, state, and territory. The mission of Math Counts is to increase enthusiasm for and enhance achievement in middle school mathematics throughout the United States, and with over 22 years, Math Counts is one of the most successful education partnerships involving volunteers, educators, industry sponsors, and students. Today, we would like to recognize the tremendous efforts and exhibition of skill by Gale's students individually and as a team on Saturday, February 17th, at the Richmond Chapter Math Counts Competition. Noor Zakira took third place in the countdown row, and Gale's team of four, to include Noor, Zakira, Zakria, Brian Fines, Olivia Smith, and Mahati Badula, won second place overall. Congratulations to Math Counts Team Gale.
Congratulations.
Our next, or my next recognition would be for Hajar Nawabi, but I don't see her as of yet, so if I could have her teacher, Ms. Smith, come down?
We have another award, would you think, if you think she's coming, we could, you know, put you at the end? If you prefer.
I do think she's coming.
Why don't we call Mr. JR Raible, and then when he finishes, we'll...
Certainly.
Bring you back, and if she's not here, we can have the teacher.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. JR Raible is the Principal of Conway Elementary School. And you can talk slowly, Mr. Raible.
You know, that's not my nature.
I know, but...
Alright, good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Benson. Good to see you this evening. So, with the one and only Tim White come down to the front. So, in March of 2017, this gentleman right here, Mr. Tim White, it's a parent of Conway, and also a husband to one of our Conway teachers, sat down with me to discuss a calling he had. Tim grew up with a little, very little, and oftentimes didn't have enough food growing up for meals, so from his experience, he knew that many of our kids in our community faced the same challenges, and so armed with this background and drive that is unlike probably any person, any human being I've ever met in my entire life, he set out to feed the children of Conway within the first year of existence of this company or this organization that he founded called Stafford Food Security. So, in a few short weeks, he was able to make this nonprofit happen, and what we had thought was going to be a year endeavor of just getting some bags into Conway. This gentleman right here, he researched meals, he built efficient and nutritious meals. They weren't just random meals that somebody gathered. They have everything down to the caloric intake, to the protein, to the actual cost, and where which store around the area will actually provide the best price. So he put them into our school color coordinating bags, and with a few short weeks of inception, he had book bags at the ready for any child identified as food insecure. So kiddo is identified by a teacher that needs food, instantaneously that bag is in that kid's hand with a little letter that goes home to that family to say, "Hey, we're here to help you." No questions asked, no name taken, and just made it happen. So, and almost overnight, and so now he's on a roll, his vision grows then from one to all schools in Stafford County, and over the next 11 months, we just had our 300, our year anniversary just two weeks ago, he successfully found a way to provide free backpack dinner meals for every single school in Stafford County, for educators simply to see the need and simply give them a book bag to take home. It's an immediate meal at no cost to the taxpayers, to the school, to, in fact, he hand delivers them. He and his amazing family, who is here tonight with them, hand deliver the book bags to us so that we can hand them out. His organization funds, packs, delivers every book bag that goes out to our families with nothing requested in return. He has since started then working with also the Sheriff's Department, so that if they identify a need on their patrol, that they'll also give our kiddos book bags, backpack meals. He has since then gone into other school divisions and is working and partnering with other organizations to expand this beyond our borders, but it started right here in Stafford all because of this man. So Tim White, through his incredible persistence, selfless efforts, and unwavering drive, has constructed and implemented a highly successful program to help feed families in need in Stafford County. He is the example of every single citizen should try to emulate. We are deeply honored to work alongside him to support Stafford Food Security, and we could not be more thankful to have this man right here, Tim White, as a citizen of our community.
Would Mr. White's family like to come in for the picture?
She makes a major part of that happening.
I was gonna say, come on down.
That was a compliment.
Come on.
Eight birthday days.
We need to recognize the family as well.
And Amy makes a major portion of this happen to happen, so without them, this wouldn't be possible.
Mr. Raible, your part too.
Was that slow enough? Usually I want up here, I'm timed in talking.
Okay, if we're not, not ready with Gale, we do have a proclamation which we could move up as well. Mrs. Egan is going to read our proclamation to recognize Dr. Holly R. Feliciano.
I'm gonna do this a little bit differently, I'm not gonna sit up there. I'm going to ask my friend to come down here, please. While she's coming down here, I want to say thanks, you guys, for accommodating my request, and I'd really like to give some thanks to Dr. Sue Clark, who was a major contributor in helping me word this, so... Hi! It's good to see you.
It's good to see you.
Okay. This is a proclamation recognizing Holly Rice Feliciano's doctoral achievement. Whereas, Dr. Feliciano is a Stafford County parent and has been an active PTO member and school volunteer over the past several years, and whereas, Dr. Feliciano's work in the schools provided a foundation for her becoming an avid supporter of the school division and its educational initiatives, leading her to pursue educational opportunities herself regarding education delivery models. And whereas, the PhD in education program is a rigorous one focused on in-depth research designed to enhance the profession and educational system as a whole. And whereas, Dr. Feliciano's doctoral journey included substantial time for study, review, reflection, writing, rewriting, and analysis without support of a cohort with other professionals or alternative doctoral program practices. And whereas, such a field of study takes years of personal commitment, persistence, balancing of life, and an aptitude for complex technical data and information. And whereas, nearly 80% of students who commit to doctoral programs with the completion of coursework do not complete the dissertation portion of their program. Whereas, Dr. Feliciano not only completed her dissertation, but became an expert in her study and continually made a contribution to educational practices and student performance while showing concern for the students of Stafford County Public Schools. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Stafford County School Board that we recognize and congratulate Dr. Feliciano's accomplishments and achievement of becoming an expert in her study of education. Congratulations.
Sure.
You want one by yourself?
Selfie? Alright, that's the end of our proclamations. Is Mrs. Lloyd still wait? Mrs. Lloyd, would you like us to just hold off on this, or do you know for a fact that she's coming? Well, the weather. What would you prefer us to do? Okay, thank you.
Hajar Nawabi is a 7th grader at T. Benton Gale Middle School, and she was one of four winners selected in the 2018 Encyclopedia of Virginia and the Library of Virginia's Virginia Women in History Student Writing Contest. Hajar was recognized at a special ceremony Thursday, May 22nd, March 22nd, at the Library of Virginia for her essay, and I'd just like to read a little bit of it very quickly. "The most inspirational book I've read recently, Inside Out and Back Again. Pang Ha Li wanted to write her story but was incapable of telling the whole truth. Since she wasn't good at telling the truth, she created a fictional character resembling her family's experience. This book is about a 10-year-old girl, Ha, whose life and her family's life changed because of the Vietnam War. It's about when she and her family started from scratch. Ha is a girl that has her papier-try, her best friend, her own holidays, and her own beliefs, but the war takes all that away. The war makes her move to a country she knows nothing about. Whenever I read this book, it reminds me of myself. I too left my country. I too felt stupid when I couldn't raise my hand for a math problem. I too faced people that didn't want me in the United States. While I was reading, I cried and laughed at Ha and myself. I cried when she was bullied, and I laughed at her being too naive. This book made me realize that I'm not the only one. It made me feel like I'm a part of a club that only immigrant and refugee kids are in. It shaped this feeling that I'm the zebra from the animated movie Madagascar that just found its herd. As I mentioned before, the book taught me to connect and to communicate with others, because people around us can't help if we aren't able to communicate and tell."
I think she may just come in. Come on down.
This is Hajar.
Perfect.
Do you ever walk into a room right when people are talking about you?
Perfect timing.
As I mentioned before, the book taught me to connect and communicate with others, because people around us can't help us if we aren't able to communicate and tell them. Inside Out and Back Again has positively changed my perspective. Reading someone else's fictional past made me let go of some of things. For instance, I don't blame the kids that were mean to me. Those kids didn't know enough about me or my country, so they naturally thought the way the adults in their life did. I came to the conclusion that everyone has their own story and shouldn't be judged based on what we see on TV. Overall, Pang Ha Li, mostly true story, made me accept the fact that sometimes adults make decisions that we don't understand at the time. It opened up my world. I found that I was more aware of people around me. Inside Out and Back Again is truly promising, inspiring, and encouraging. Ha may not be a real person, but she is my true best friend, and Hajar, you're a real and true inspiration to us all. Congratulations."
Congratulations to all the recipients of the awards and the proclamation this evening. That brings us to citizen comments. Mr. McCosker is going to read our background information.
Citizen comments, citizens. Three minutes be allowed for each speaker, and speakers are encouraged to sign in right here and provide a copy of your comments to the board clerk. Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to the general invitation by the chairman. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. Chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with approval from the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against the division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also use the procedures outlined in Stafford County Policy 1113, Public Complaints.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. We didn't have anyone sign up for comments this evening, but if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the board, please come forward at this time, and there's a sign up sheet on the... I don't know what you call it, the wall there. I see, I see one speaker who we recognize coming forward.
My first time speaking. Paul Waldowski, 8 Pickett Lane. I wish you would tell all your speakers to speak into the microphone so we all can hear. Can't hear in my left ears. My organization is the 2030 Cicadas. That's the next group that will get a PhD, a public high school diploma. If you noticed all the cameras tonight, you can thank us, the baby boomers, for the iPhone. We invented it, it's not fake news. The Superintendent, the one thing I like about that name, it's got the word in it, Mr. Superintendent. I'm sure they're looking for an interim superintendent. I'd be glad to volunteer for $100,000 every six months. I'd like to be the boss of the assistant superintendents. Alright, let's get down to some comments that I saw while I watched you all on TV. Let's start with the Fredericksburg Christian School. Well, is it 10.1 million or 10.6 million? What's $500,000 to an attorney, that's nothing. Shelton Shop Road's got a big leak, it looks like it's coming from the Fredericksburg Christian School. I would, I already notified the Utilities Department. I think you all should be aware of that also. Also, I keep on harping about the Garrisonville Middle School, AG Wright, and Rock Hill Elementary School. There are no lines for safety painted on the roads except the word "school." Golly. And of course, the churches that were at North Stafford High School have now moved to Colonial Forge, and I also saw a sign with Andy Moncur Elementary School, but I didn't have my iPhone, so I can't give you a picture, so I can bring it here. Also, for the audience, you're gonna see, school board members are gonna talk about CIPs, you know, capital improvement programs. They're just elected for to be on the school board, and I know Ferry Farm was number two. As a matter of fact, I saw the Schools by Election District. I think Ferry Farm was part of King George County, but it got gerrymandered. Gosh, no high school there, amazing. No high school at Griffiths Whitewater either. Sounds to me like we have a gerrymandering problem in this county. But I do like some of the comments that have come up with "North and South." Wow, what a concept. We have schools in the North and the South, just like we should have a Northeast, Southeast, Northwest, Southwest district, and an elected chairman, not a selected one. And I think my time is just about out. Five, four, three, two, one. See you next federal holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Waldowski, would you please sign in? Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Alright, seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and come to the board. We have Board Member Comments that were added to the agenda this evening, and we'll start with Mrs. Decatur.
Good evening, everyone. I watched that video back from our meeting last Thursday and realized the importance of making sure my microphone is on at the appropriate times, because you cannot hear people speaking when their microphone is not on, on the video, and I made some very good points. I wanted to first say that this will more than likely be my last board meeting prior to welcoming a new little one to our family, so that does not mean that I won't be checking emails or perhaps even trying to sneak into meetings wearing my little one if they'll allow me to, but I will, I just want you all and everyone else to know that I do plan on still being available, so this is a very important time of year. I did not intend on planning this around budget season, but it happens. And also, thank you guys, Board Members and Dr. Benson, for my balloons and these little presents that were left here for the baby, we really appreciate that, and appreciate you guys, truly. So, I did want to amend the agenda just because this is our last meeting before the Board of Supervisors will vote to pass their budget. This evening, I know that they are having a work session where they're kind of working on their budget and determining the tax rate as, you know, and I just wanted to let you know that I did meet personally today with my counterpart, Mr. Cavalier. I delivered budget items that support our funding needs and explained several items that were of question at our last joint meeting on this past Thursday. It's my hopes that he will deliver and advocate to his board at their budget work session tonight, explain some of those items that were of question, and also advocate for the funding that we really do need. Among my requests were that their board fully fund our mandates and our compliance list, the 2.5% COLA, and I'd also like to see fully funded teacher and service scale enhancements. Now, I've given them the exact number that it will take for those to all be funded. That doesn't nearly cover a lot of our additional needs. For example, that leaves out things like cyclical replacement of technology. That will leave out, if I were the only one approving, I should let you know that this is based on if I were the only one approving a budget, but that would leave out the cyclical replacement of buses. That leaves out a dyslexia reading program, several infrastructure projects, repairs, maintenance, security upgrades, there's no funding in there for security upgrades, so while I've given a very basic list of our needs, and unfortunately felt as though I'm being greedy for asking for that, it still doesn't come close to funding the additional needs that our schools really require. So anyhow, they do have a work session tonight. I believe that they will be working to approve their budget on May 2nd, and I would just... I believe that they will be working to approve their budget on May 2nd, and I would just ask you guys to again, take a look at the things that are important to you and our budget and get out there and advocate for those things, please, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Decatur, and thank you for adding this to the agenda this evening. Mrs. Hazard.
I'll be, I'll be short. I think what I'd want to say about the budget, because that is, well, let me start with something positive. I want to thank Mrs. Decatur for all that she does, because even many of us remember, some of us with toddlers were like, and I have to say, you always respond, you are always there, so I just would like to thank her for her commitment. Please make sure you stay with us. Because moving into my second point is budgets are all about people. Everything that we do as a school board is about people. You have little people that are coming. We want to make sure we have the best school division, so when, let's see, your little one will be here in what, 18 years, is probably like the year 2036 or some other lovely name. We want to make sure that we still have-
Ferry Farm gets its-
That we have a great, that we have a great school system. But this is all about people. The focus on compensation, which I, I know that this board is, is committed to, it's also about the people that we serve, our students and our families, the people that we bring up here and, and recognize. But it's also, and what's most concerning to me, is our budget isn't just about the people who are here today. It is about the people we are projecting that are coming, and I will tell you, there are a lot coming. We have been attacked on what our projections say, they are on. We have not been off by more than a percent for the last three years. Do they show up in different places? Yes, but they are coming. And my concern is, is this board committed to a staff, staffing standard that allowed us to make sure that we are working on class size reduction. Many years in the fall, the reason that we have to add teachers and we do it last minute is because all of a sudden 4th grade or something becomes larger than what we think is available, is, is acceptable. I will tell you my concern, if we are not fully funded, or at least mostly funded, is that one initiative of the board is going to suffer, and I believe that that is not a great thing, but I believe that the teachers and all those who touch our students need to be given this raise because they are going to be probably having higher class sizes. So again, this is all about people, but it's not just the people today, it's the ones that are coming.
Mrs. Young.
I did not prepare any board member comments, but since we were talking about the budget, I'm not begging for anything. I don't think that we should be begging. We are a community. Our school system deserves to be fully funded. I'm not going to pick this or that. They should fund the whole budget. We are one of the richest counties, and I don't see why not, but one thing I will beg the public to do is elect their officials that are going to support them. We shouldn't be begging.
Thank you. Mrs. Egan.
I don't really have anything. I think everything's already pretty much been said, so I'll just take this opportunity to wish Mrs. Decatur a good time away, expanding your family, and we were going to miss you, and if there's anything that you need, you know, you can call on all of us.
I'll be back by the next board meeting.
That's, you may still be pregnant by then.
Next Wednesday, actually. We have our work session.
We'll miss you for the whole two weeks you're gone.
Thank you. Dr. Chase.
I don't really have much to say, other than I just want to thank staff for their attendance at that last meeting that we had with the joint work session, and we really do appreciate everything that you all do.
Mr. McOsker.
Ms. Decatur, congratulations. I know a little early, I'm going to knock on wood, everything's going to go just smoothly. So anyway.
Thank you. Oh, I thought you were done.
Pay raises, so my focus is pay raises. Thanks. All right, that's it.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, well, I, I have nothing to add. You know, I trust that the supervisors will take care of our staff. I think they're very aware of our need to give raises. It's been a while, and we are no longer competitive, and as Mrs. Hazard pointed out, it's not just today and next year. This is for the future, and it's for the future of Stafford County Public Schools. We're blessed to have staff who have been with us for a long time, and they have been very generous with their, their time in mentoring and bringing along our, our newer, younger teachers. And I must say, the, the more experienced teachers have often told me that they learn a lot from our new teachers, so it's not just a one-way, it's, it goes both ways. And, and I, I hope that we will be able to offer competitive compensation packages so that we will continue to be able to attract, you know, highly qualified candidates to, to come to Stafford County schools, because the impact of those teachers is, it, it's just immeasurable. To have a highly qualified teacher makes a tremendous difference in a child's education for every single year, so. That brings us to the end. Dr. Benson, do you have anything you'd like to add? We, you know, we're amending here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for two things. One is, in, in the area of, excuse me, bringing new teachers onboard. On Thursday evening, we will be awarding five scholarships through the Stafford Education Foundation at Mountain View High School to students that are interested in pursuing a career in education. We're hoping to have them sign a letter of intent to come back and work for us at the time that they finish their, finish their degree. We're also going to be awarding a number of innovative teaching grants that evening, and we're really looking forward to that. And then on Friday, I'm going to do my best to keep up with the students at Moncur Elementary that are running in their fun run.
Friday? What, what time is that? That's right across the street from my office.
It starts at nine, they're going to be running different groups of students from 9:40 to 12, and then from 12:30 to 3:05, so it's an all-day event. There's no way I can do all of that, I'm sure. It's more than a marathon.
All right, well, thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Ms. Egan. Do we have a second?
Second.
I heard Ms. Hazard first, so second by Ms. Hazard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we have a number of action items which we reviewed at the last meeting, but if anyone has any questions, you can bring them up. Mrs. Massey is with us this evening, and thank you for coming back from your conference last time to-
Yes.
-to do our training. Item 9.01, approve the 2018-2019 Stafford Head Start and Early Head Start Refunding Application for $2,496,151, including the Philosophy, Policy Council, Bylaws, Policies, Annual Self-Assessment, Annual Plan and Goals, and receive for information Head Start Board Training Women. Which, am I, what happened to the-
We just didn't take off every-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve 9.01.
Second.
Yeah. We're approving the 2018-2019 Head Start Funding Presentation. All right, I'm going back to my paper copy. Forget this computer. I did refresh it, Ms. Hall. All right, let's-
I made the motion.
All right, we have a motion?
And I seconded.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. Motion by Ms. Egan, second by Ms. Hazard. All right, is everyone clear what we're voting on here? Thank you very much. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 9.02, approve the Career and Technical Education Local Plan and Budget for School Year 2018-2019. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve it.
Approve.
Motion by Dr. Chase. Is that a second by Ms. Young? Is there any questions about this item? No? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve the Career and Technical Education Local Plan and Budget, School Year 2018-2019, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 9.03, approve a purchase in the amount of $332,290.80 for K-1 Open Court Reading foundational skill kits.
Motion to approve 9.03.
Motion by Ms. Egan. Have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hazard. Any discussion or questions on this? No? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 9.04, approve the adoption and purchase of textbooks for mathematics, grade 9 to 12, family and consumer sciences, grades 6 to 12, techno, technology, education, grades 6 to 12, and music for grade 6 to 12. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve 9.04.
Motion by Ms. Young, second by Ms. Egan. Any discussion? No? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 9.05, approve the purchase of 1,166 Chromebooks and the amount of $280,000 from budgeted FY18 funds to cyclically replace 300 MacBooks. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve 9.05.
Motion by Ms. Young, second by Ms. Egan. Any discussion? Dr. Chase.
Yeah, I, I just would ask the board that we do have a work session in the near future to discuss exactly what we're doing with technology, especially in our elementary schools.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Hazard.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time. I would second what Dr. Chase has, has mentioned. I think, and I know that Ms. Stewart is looking into and getting our technology plan, and I think that's something that we as a board need to meet and understand. This evening, I am going to certainly, I am going to approve this one, because as I look at Margaret Brant and Rocky Run, two schools and ours that are operating at over 100% capacity, this does make a difference. However, I think similar to Dr. Chase, I want to make sure that we do an analysis of the technology, that we're not just consumers of the technology, but we're producers with the technology, and I think that's something that the board wants to get a better handle on. So, anyway, I agree with that, but I think this evening, the impact is, is huge, and so I, I think we, we want to, but I think technology is definitely a tool for our kids. But as Dr. Benson even mentioned too, what is the training? What are we doing to make sure that we are using it in that manner?
Thank you. Ms. Chase?
Yeah.
Dr. Chase, Ms. Young.
So, yeah, and I, I agree, and I also want to state that, you know, we, people that are in technology know what it could do. What we also need to do is ensure that the individuals that are the consumers of the technology know what they're doing with it, not just asking for technology, but they need to try to implement it in their education and in their lesson plans. You know, teachers and, and the school systems need to do a better job at that. We could provide, you know, we could do a partnership. Technology will be a partnership, and we could have strategies, but we also need the school system to embrace the strategy.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any other comments? Any questions? No? All in favor of the motion to approve? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to 9.06, approve a purchase in the amount of $675,000 for hardware components from Autronica Computers, Inc., to upgrade 6,000 desktop computers in order to migrate to Windows 10 and extend the expected useful life by three years. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Young. Have a second? Is that Ms. Hazard? Second by Ms. Hazard. Any discussion? No? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 9.07, approve the award of a construction contract to Sorenson Gross Company of Sterling, Virginia, an amount of $2,816,867, using VSPA 2018A and 2019A funds for the repair interior finishes project at A.G. Wright Middle Schools and Garrisonville Elementary School. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Hazard. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Egan. Any discussion? Ms. Hazard.
Sorry about that. I'd like to compliment staff, because I know I did ask for the additional information on how we should do this, you know, within and what we could defer, so I do appreciate the work there. I do see that we need to reduce, we can do this reduction in the bus parking project. I think again, as most of you know, my big issue is growth. We, you know, projects like these, we can defer, and I am in favor of them tonight, but in the future, we are going to have to be dealing with the growth in our buses, our students, and everything else that we may not always be able to defer, and just as a little side note, maybe we have parking a year later at that Moncur School that we, that seems to now be back on the, on the plot. There's a large parking lot there.
Right next to the commuter parking lot.
That is correct.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard, and I'd like to thank Mr. Haran for coming up with a viable option to be able to continue with the project within our means, so thank you.
So, yeah, so no, I, I, at first, when this came up, I first was not happy with it, right? And the reason I'm not happy with it is because I see $2.6 million going to everything else but Ferry Farm. That, you know, that's how I look at it, right? Although, you know, is it, is it staff's fault that that's happened? No, because Ferry Farm was back on a rebuild, and then it was on renovation, then it was on a rebuild. However, I still, I think we all know, the Board of Supervisors made it very clear that Ferry Farm is not getting a rebuild, right? It's getting a renovation. So, I was just hoping, Dr. Benson, you would have, with the staff, came up with a plan to maybe do something this summer to Ferry Farm, to help out, and, and to tick away at those 15 to 20 things, those $23 million worth of stuff that a full renovation gets to, gets at, and maybe do something this summer to Ferry Farm. So, I, I just leave it out there for, for, you know, you and Scott to still kind of think about that, and that's why, when this first came up, I wasn't real happy, but you know, I, I don't want Garrisonville, and I don't want, I always keep saying, I keep saying, I keep saying middle, H.H. Poole, A.G. Wright. I don't want Garrisonville and A.G. Wright to get to the state that Ferry Farm's in, and this is exactly what this is doing. This is bridging that 2008 study gap with, with whenever the renovation happens at these schools and to, to help the interior finishes and the lighting and all the things that, you know, my kids deserve as well, right? So, our, our kids, right? Our kids. So, I'm gonna, yeah, go ahead, I'm done.
Are you finished?
I'm done.
Ms. Young.
So, my, my concern is that, I, I was wondering how we stack these, because Melchers, Ferry Farm, are still waiting, or there's, there's more work to be done, and I wasn't sure how this was done. I don't want to take away, because I haven't been to A.G. Wright for a while, and I don't know what's wrong there, but, you know, the staff knows best. But I urge you all to, if Fredericksburg Christian is not, is not on the platform, that we do something with Melchers soon. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you, Ms. Young, and I, I would like to say, as the Rock Hill representative, I appreciate your support, Mr. McOsker and the other members of the board. These projects are not pulled out of a hat. They, they've been on the list for years, and, you know, there's, there's, there's a method, and there is a, a recognition that even though you're on the list, it still doesn't get done, because other things happen and emergencies come up, and, you know, we have to address it. We have a finite number, you know, of funds available, you know, to us, but, you know, this, this project has been on the list for a long time, and it's, it wasn't a matter of picking these schools over another school, and, and I do appreciate what you've raised, and I would, you know, ask Dr. Benson if, if he could come back to us at some point. You know, there's not much time left, but if there are kind of things to be done, you will notice that this particular project is going to be done over the course of two years, so it's, it's not like you can just pop in and, and make all these improvements, but if that's something that you could, you know, put forth, and I know Ms. Young talks about, you know, north and, and needs there, but all our schools have needs, and as a former superintendent told me many, many years ago, they're all our kids. Just because the school is in our particular district, or is not in our district, doesn't mean they're our kids. All 28,000 belong to every one of us, so, you know, I, I appreciate, you know-
I do too. Yeah, I do too.
All right, so, if there's no other discussion, we'll call for question on the matter. All in favor of the motion to approve the award of the construction contract, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to our last action item, approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to policies and regulations- Approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to policies and regulations as reviewed by the Associate Superintendent of Instructional Services. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second by Ms. Young, second by Ms. Egan. Is there anything we need to know, Dr. Benson, no change from last time? Okay. So, any, any questions? No? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion to approve? Please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Motion carries unanimously. We have two information items. The first is approve the special education annual plan for school year 2018, 2019. Do we have a presentation, Dr. Benson? Or, you know, are there any questions for the board, from the board, about the plan?
I would just have one comment.
Ms. Hazard, yes?
As special education was a topic of discussion with our funding body, I would just like to mention and put into the record that the first page of this application, the superintendent's certification, which is actually ours as well, I would say, states, "I certify that this school division has developed local policies and procedures for the provision of special education and related services which are kept current and which ensure compliance with the requirements of and any revisions to the IDEA, its federal implementing regulations, and the Virginia Board of Education's regulations." On top of that, of course, we always need to, when IDEA, when we say that, we, that is also talking about all of the 504s, IEPs that are out there. That is also the compliance we are talking about for our kids. And this is the superintendent's certification that he will sign with our approval. And so, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, that this is not something we look at. We all care. We also want to stay in compliance, and we need to do what's best for, just as we stated, all our kids across the division. And I just feel like that's something we need to say because it is our responsibility. Madam Chair?
Yes. Ms. Egan?
Thank you, Mrs. Hazard. You beat me to the punch. I was going to actually read this verbatim, the entire certification as to, because this is, this is, Dr. Benson's going to sign it, but at the end of the day, it's a reflection on this board. So, I'm glad you mentioned the IEP and the 504 issue. This was a topic of conversation at the joint CIP meeting, and Dr. Chase actually brought it, brought it up. And I just want to repeat it for the record, that IEPs and 504s are indeed mandates. They are mandated through the IDEA. We have to comply with all of those requirements in there. If we don't, we're in violation of state and federal law, which could, we could either be charged by the Office of Civil Rights, State Department of Education, you name it. There's a lot of things that could happen if we don't take care of what is mandated through the federal and the state laws. So, I just wanted to put that out there for the record, given the discussion of what is a state mandate, what is not a state mandate. One of the other mandates that we did not talk about, it's, it's not in statute, it is called case law. And when the, when any of the, the upper courts either support or, or vote in favor of certain mandates or whatever, we are, it doesn't matter that it's not in statute, it's in case law, and we are obligated to ensure that we're following what that case law, what the result of that case law was. So, while we're having this conversation about it's in statute, it's not in statute, it doesn't just have to be in statute. It has to, it's in case law, it's in the IDEA, or the IEPs and the 504s. It's all, all these little tentacles out there that we have to pay attention to. And thank goodness, we have great staff here that's, that's been taking care of that. So, I just wanted that for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Did you have any, no? All right, well, this item will be coming back to us at our next meeting. The deadline for submitting the special education plan is May 11. So, Dr. Benson, does that give you enough time if we approve this at the next meeting to, to submit it?
It does. It's, it's close. I just want the board to be aware, but this is a significant plan, so we want to make sure the board has had adequate opportunity to review it.
Thank you. We'll, we'll put that in number one for action at the next meeting, give you a little extra time. All right. That brings us to the second informational item. 10.02. Approve the award of professional services consulting contracts, open-ended term contracts for architectural services. Are there any questions about this proposal for the award? This will be coming back to us for action at our next meeting.
Hmm, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Young?
So, the three members from the staff reviewed the proposal and scored them? Is that what it is? This evaluation process, like, is there a result?
Yes, ma'am. I think in the agenda item, it identifies four architectural firms that we selected. This is something that we do on a routine basis. The last time we did it was three years ago, when we did one base year and three, two additional contracts. The statute or the code allows us to do one base year with four option years for the contract. So, that's what we're pursuing. We also, not to mention architects, but we do this for six other disciplines, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. We do it for archite-, archaeological, we do it for environmental, industrial hygiene. So, those will be shortly coming at the next meeting for you guys to evaluate and hopefully approve. But, so, we broke our teams into three persons teams. So, we have over 250 proposals on the different disciplines. The architecture, I think I listed the number of architectural proposals we had. So, we reviewed those, we scored them based on a criteria that was identified in the RFP, and so, we selected them. Of the four that, and we like to keep four architects, because we like to have certain architects do better things, in our opinion, than others. And so, two of the four are new to us in term contracts, not that we, they're not new to the Commonwealth or the K-12.
Stan Tech?
No, it's VMDO and, oh gosh, Perkins Eastman. So, Mosley and Stan Tech, we've used before, and they are currently term contracts for us. So, so.
So, yeah, you're, you're the expert, but I just wanted to ensure that everyone is getting a fair chance to compete.
You bet.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, well, this will be coming back to us at the next meeting for approval. That ends our informational items. The announcement of the upcoming meeting, the next school board meeting is May 8th at 7:00 PM. But, we do need to have probably several work sessions prior to that on the budget. The supervisors are scheduled to adopt their budget on May 2nd, which means, you know, May 3rd, we can roll our sleeves up and, you know, start looking at ours. We've approved a budget, but if they, if it's not fully funded, we're going to have to make changes in it. So, we're going to need to have those discussions as a board, and then I assume Mr. Fulmer's going to need some time, once we come to a conclusion, to put it all together before we can actually adopt a budget. So, you know, are, are you all, maybe not Mrs. Decatur. I think she'll be otherwise engaged.
So, I, I will be at Dartmouth College, visiting Sean. It's a family weekend up at Dartmouth, and that's a long, long, long ride. So, I will be out the 3rd and the 4th. I'm taking the family up there, so, so I apologize for missing the, if you are going to have one on the 3rd, which I would. But I will not be there, so, for those of you who want to slip stuff in on me, I will be back Monday to fix it, right?
I was thinking you could give us your thoughts before we even meet.
I will. I will type. I am going to type stuff up and hand it to y'all.
We'll just put a line item for Ferry Farm in there.
Yes, yeah, just put, you guys just cross Ferry Farm out while I'm gone. You know, yeah, I know, that's not funny. I'm going to get, I'm going to get beat up for that one.
All right, thank you. As much as I would like to have you there, Mr. McCosker, I think we really need, as a board, to meet next week and get started, because our first session, we're going to really be hashing it out. And I can tell you, you know, the, well, we only have two that, that haven't done this before, it is incredibly painful. It is incredibly painful because.
Maybe they'll fund the whole thing.
Well, that's true.
I will say, I will say that the tax rate is 99 cents.
That is correct.
They passed the 99 cents. Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Decatur. Yep.
I, I think that the, the 3rd is sort of our meeting to, to do the, okay, what do we have? I mean, and I know Mr. McCosker will know on Wednesday night what it is too, and we will all be looking at that. I think part of the thing, and we talk about Mr. Fulmer even creating the budget, but we need to give direction to, to staff of potential avenues to, we want pursued and some maybe that we don't. So, I mean, I think that that's critical on the 3rd. I know right now, we talked about a Fab meeting. I think it's, it's many people that can come to that meeting to start crystallizing our suggestions or things to pursue for staff, because a lot of this stuff does not, can't be turned around in five minutes. I mean, you know, it's if we are pursuing certain things.
Ms. Hazard, I have a point of privilege. Chris, can you come up to the microphone, please? And so, Ms. Hazard brought up a good point. I think we're all, when, when is like the deadline for the school board to approve their budget? What is that? What, adopt their budget? Thank you, Ms.
So, there's obviously a legal deadline, which differs from a logistical deadline. So, legally, we have 30 days from the time that the state adopts. The state hasn't adopted a budget yet. So, that, we're not going to be on the hook by that, because logistically, we need to get contracts out to employees. And Ms. Bowright can speak into more detail of that if we need, but I've talked to her in advance, and we've kind of scheduled it out and worked backwards as far as when we need to get contracts to employees, how much time we need to prep those contracts, and working back. So, roughly, that first week of June is like our drop dead of, we need to get contracts out the door. So, working backwards, we need a couple weeks ahead of time that really is a drop dead timeline that we need to have a budget adopted.
Can you, can you give us a date, please?
So, I was looking at around, I was looking at May 17th as a special called meeting, and we could adopt there.
What does everyone think about that? I mean, Madam Chair?
What time are we talking about on that date?
Well, it could be earlier than that date. I think what Mr. Fulmer is telling us is that no later than the 17th of May.
Okay, gotcha.
If, if, if that's not a.
So, that could be a special, you know, of course, it'll be a special called meeting, right?
And I think, Ms. Healy, I think when I was talking to you, you mentioned, I don't know if one of those days, either 17th or 18th, there was an early morning meeting.
Yes, we have a, we have a, a discipline hearing scheduled. Is it at 9?
On the 17th?
Is it the 17th?
You have two different ones.
I thought, oh, there's one on the 18th.
Yeah, the, the whole board will be here that morning if perhaps we could, well, depending on where we get on our work session, you know, perhaps we could schedule it for, you know, 8 o'clock. Or, or we could do it after the hearing, depending on, you know, the will of the board. By that time, we really should have made our, our decisions, because Mr. Fulmer will have done his part and put it together for us to come adopt. We should not be planning on making any changes to what we adopt, because then he would have to go back to the drawing board and put it all together. Ms. Egan?
Mr. Fulmer, can you tell me what a scenario would look like if the Board of Supervisors categorically funds us for the 2.5? Do we have any room to do anything else other than that?
So, they, they have the legal option of categorically funding us based on our categories set forth by the state, which is instruction, administration.
Transportation.
Transportation, yep. So, there's seven or eight technology, yes, sir. So, they can, that's about the limit, they can categorically fund us. Now, they do have, you know, they can appropriate, they currently, what they do is they do a 95% appropriation, and they hold back 5% until the audit's complete and they release the other 5%. That doesn't really necessarily hamstring us, because a lot of our funds, that 5%, we don't need until, you know, really the last month of the year.
Okay.
I hope, does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, so, so then, I guess that if we were to do raises, and we still have to, we still have these compliance, the must-dos, the special ed, you know, positions that we need to fill, can we do both? And can they redirect the hiring of those folks to take those salaries and put it towards raises as opposed to filling those needed positions?
I don't believe they have that legal right, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to speak from an attorney perspective, and we could get some state code references there.
I think the categorical funding would be, it would just, we'd have to be careful about the, they would have to ensure that if they categorically fund us for, let's say, the 2.5% only, at $5.2 million, which, $5.2 million. We would just have to ensure that our employees that are, are by state mandate are included into, in the transportation, because we have employees in the transportation line, they're not all in the operational line. So, we would have to be very, and Chris and I have talked about this, we'd have to be very, we'd have to make sure that there, we get the 2.5% for all the employees, don't just put the 2.5% in the operational line and then forget about the, there's not a lot of employees in the technology line, in the grants line, in the, right? We would have to make sure that that, we account for all those employees.
And the reason I'm asking that is because I, I just saw something online that the C-word is being tossed around over there, so.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes.
Well, we can discuss that further in the work session. How about May 3rd? Mrs. Hazard, I, I know the Fab was originally scheduled for that, but given the short timeframe, I think it may be in our interest to have a full board meeting with everyone able to participate, and we don't have to sit in the back and keep it zipped. If that's, if that's agreeable to the board on, on the 3rd. And we'll get your input before you go.
I think the 3rd, and then I think.
Is there, before we do that, do we have a preferred time for the 3rd? That's next Thursday, right?
The Fab, that's about 5:30.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I can be, I'm flexible.
So, replacing the meeting with a.
Well, yeah, we, Fab will be canceled.
Fab will be replaced.
And we will have a full board work session, which.
5:30 or 5?
5:30.
What can people get to?
Right. Ms. Egan?
5:30.
All right, so, 5:30 on May 3rd for our first work session. All right, then we should schedule a follow-up work session the next week. No, I think it's going to need to be the next week, because we're, Chris is going to need.
He's going to need time.
Probably a week, once we come to our consensus, to put it together in a format for us to review for the meeting where we're going to adopt the budget. Dr. Chase?
We have a listening tour, we have a listening tour on the 10th, so.
Listening tours on the 10th.
Right. Well, what time is the listening tour?
It's at 6:00.
It's at 6:00. Would anybody be available?
Four.
4:00, Ferry Farms? Possibly, we won't go in the basement.
For a work session?
For a work session, yes. Would that, I mean, that's, that's early, but.
Right, is there a reason we couldn't do the 9th or the 8th?
Yeah, I mean, we could do it any day that week.
There is a board meeting, correct, on the 8th? So, we could do before then. I can't promise you, depending on the changes that we make on Thursday, the 3rd, what takes time is if we're making major changes to the enhancements, to the teachers' enhancements, to the service side, those are all, you know, individually built at every experience level. It's not just saying 2% of the budget. So, as soon as you say, hey, we can't put 1.8 in the teachers', we need to do one, or we can't do 2.5 into the service scale, we've got to rework all those scales, load them into the.
The actual scales is what I was worried about for the time, the time, the white space that he'll need.
Yeah, so.
What about Friday? The 11th? Just to give him, Mr. Fulmer?
I'm okay with Friday.
I'm, I'm, I'm flexible, until we get to June.
I'd like to on the 8th, at least, as a work session for me, at that point, to get an update. That still would allow us, no, I think, no, we can't. Trying to see if we could then, if we needed more, but I don't, I think sort of, depending on if the board sticks with.
These scales, that we like them, and we are going to do everything we can, which I, this board member will, I hope you're not changing the scales at all. And we're going to be looking at other areas. So, I would like to at least, maybe on the 8th, get at least an update in a work session, since we're already.
Right.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I think we're, we're going to need at least an hour and a half. I mean, is, would it be possible, I know we try to start them at 6, but could we start at 5, you know, for, for then? Because that's only fair.
Yep.
To, you know, to give us adequate time to work through these, you know, matters. And hopefully, take a little break before we start our 7 o'clock meeting.
And do we want to pencil in something for the 11th, in case we need it?
That's probably a good idea.
So, you have either the 10th or the, if you do 10th before the listening tour, or the 11th, if you're trying to avoid a Friday. I'm open to either one, but.
The 10th is out. I, I guess it's really early, but.
Could, could we just ask how many people are available for the 11th?
I, I can do any time.
I can do it, the 10th or the 11th.
Yeah, I mean, I can.
The 11th would be better.
All right. Well, why, and, and this is, this is going to be if we need it.
Right.
I mean, if we're incredibly efficient and get things done between the 3rd, the work session on the 3rd and the work session on the 8th, we won't need it.
So, what time on the 11th?
Yeah.
Yeah, Friday night. What time you all want to come? Hmm. Remember, a little more traffic Friday.
Just bring the cameras, and, and I'll have milkshakes at my house, and we'll just all do it at my house.
On the 3rd, 5:30. 5:30 on the 3rd, and 5 o'clock on the 8th. And while we're in the, we're in the 5s, do we want to say 5:30? 5:30 Friday night. Something to look forward to.
6:00.
6 o'clock. How lucky you want to be here.
Isn't it bad? It's the, being coming.
Right, getting here.
Yeah.
So, 6 on the 11th?
Yeah.
Why not?
Sounds like the same thing. School board, it's only two hours a week.
Two meetings a month. Two meetings a month, right?
Two meetings a month, two hours, two hours a meeting.
I would suggest having.
Come on, come on, join the club.
Well, that's not going to give Mr. Fulmer enough time, if he needs it by the, the 18th, right? I, I, I think we're just going to have to, to make it work, and appropriately, on Friday night, we can just stay here as long as it takes, because that's going to be what Mr. Fulmer needs, so he can get it done for the next week.
That's what Jamie voted on.
We can't really string it out.
I'm good.
So, let me move to 5 on Friday, because I'm thinking about Chris and, and Missy, if they work, you're working during the day. You don't want to.
We're all working during the day.
No, but I'm just saying, like, they're here.
I'm just teasing.
Okay.
So, we're saying 5?
5, 11.
5.
5 o'clock.
All right, 5 o'clock on the 11th, Missy.
So, 5:30 on the 3rd, 5 o'clock on the 8th, and if we need it, 5 o'clock on the 11th. And then the adoption, if we adopt it on the 18th, would that work for you, Mr. Fulmer? Or do you want us to schedule a special call meeting? Yes, it would be 8 o'clock on the.
That would be fine. Yeah, there's no.
You sure?
Yeah, between the evening of the 17th and the morning of the 18th, either one is fine, you know. We'll make it work.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll set that one for 8 o'clock on, yes, yes, thank you, Dr. Chase. 8 o'clock AM on Friday.
Friday.
May 18. And that meeting, that will be a meeting to adopt the budget. The other three are work sessions of the school board. They'll all be announced, but there'll be work sessions. So, at a work session, we do not make any formal decisions, but we will need to come to some consensus.
We need to make sure, we need to let the audience know that's there, because usually they take them out of proportion. So, we need to make sure that their understanding is that.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure. I, I see a nod there. Our Director of Communications and Strategic Community Involvement, et cetera, will make sure that message gets out. So, we've got three work sessions, and we may not need that third one, but if we do, we'll be here Friday night. All right. Anything further? All right, we are adjourned.